I'm going to record the meeting tonight. So for future reference, so we'll, we'll record the meeting and then we'll be able to provide the presentation online. For anyone who hasn't been able to, who can't join us tonight. So I'm going to go through it and then we'll get questions. So I know people, you might have questions in the question answer. Feel free to fill that up while I'm talking. And I will get back to it when I'm done going through presentation. I've got two presentations. So one's just kind of general. And then one really focuses on, on development in, in and around Mantic. So you can see this presentation screen here. So we'll start with here. So welcome to my virtual town hall. Normally I would have done this with you in person upstairs at the Mantic Community Center. Unfortunately, here we are. And because we haven't been able to meet previously, I wanted to, I wanted to run through this with that kind of focus on development because normally in the past, we would meet a lot. Often in the past, I'd be able to meet on multiple occasions about various things that come up. And we've had a number of things going on in the village and number of applications. Not so much zoning stuff, but a lot of site plan pieces and to fit in following the secondary plan review that we, that we did a few years ago. So I wanted to update on what's going on there. There's a, there's a number of applications in the core of the village. And then there's also some other pieces, just updating on things that have been improved in the past, but maybe haven't been, you know, acted upon. And then also we have a consultation open right now on new parks in the Mahogany community. So we're going to touch on that too. So quickly, we'll just get into this piece, my little graphic here. And so we'll start with just some of the stuff. Many of you might already know this stuff. You might not, but this is the stuff that keeps me, that keeps me busy at City Hall. And thank you. Someone said this format is actually an improvement or attending in person. Cause you can do it from your home and you can drink is that's the key thing. And for me, when you're done your drink, you can't throw it at me. So that's always better for all of us. So my role responsibilities on council. So I'm the chair of the city's environment committee. I sit on a number of other committees, as you can see here. Also sit on the auto community housing board of directors that shared the planning advisory committee, which is something that we just started at the end of last term. But I carried forward as the chair, I sit on the RVCA with, there's actually local resident, Aunt Robinson also sits on the RVCA with me. I'm on three BIAs because of the ward configuration. I also sit on the carp road corridor BIA as well as the Bar Haven BIA. And I've always been on the Mantic BIA, of course. And I know Donna Smith's here taking this in tonight. So thank you. And then sponsors group. So one of the things that we started doing more so last term at council, not so much in my first term. But we started creating these sponsors groups. So council sponsors groups where maybe four, five or six counselors sit on a, on a, on a panel and deal directly with staff on major files. And it helps sort of have that political guiding of, of certain issues, especially when it comes to contentious issues. And then we can sort of be there with staff working alongside as these things develop. And these are things that, you know, will generally come back to council multiple times before it's finally approved. And then goes out to the public a number of times as well. Those are the official plans. So I'm on all these. So I'm on the official plan sponsors group. I'm on the transportation master plan sponsors group, the climate change master plan, solid waste master plan and Lansdowne Park. The solid waste master plan is something that we have coming up to, to environment committee. Phase two of the solid waste master plan will come to virus environment committee in June. So look for that. It is sort of covering all, all pieces of our solid waste strategy at the city. When it comes to waste diversion, collection, you know, how are we, how are we doing in terms of increasing participation in the green bin? How is, how is the landfill, the lifespan of landfill? What are the alternatives to landfill? These are all the things that we're currently looking at and we're going to come back to the committee in June. And then there's actually some consultation going on too, because feeding into this will be into a collection contracts as well. So any changes there. Nothing too crazy, but still everything is with sort of an effort to look at the future of, of waste collection and the future of that landfill. Cause the last thing we want to do is cite a new landfill. We all know where landfills go. They don't go downtown. So moving on just on some city issues, I kind of touched on a little bit of this. So COVID-19 response recovery is obviously one of the things that monopolizes the majority of our time. And you know, we do our best. We're lucky to one degree in the city of Ottawa that we have a fairly resilient community. We have, I would say of all the cities in Canada, we're probably one of the best equipped to weather a storm like this, but it doesn't mean that it's easy on anyone. So we, we know what the impacts are. We've seen the impacts and we're doing our best to keep our budget, you know, flowing, keep our budget fairly status quo, not impacting too many things there, but also finding ways to try to help local business. And not always easy. And of course we're working with the province on that too, and a lot of the direction that really most of the direction when it comes to the COVID-19 response comes from the province and we try to work within that framework. Official plan review. I mentioned that I'm on a sponsors group for that. So that is, has been an ongoing thing for the last year and a half, two years. The official plan is slated to come to planning committee and agriculture real affairs committee, two committees that I sit on in September. And the big piece of that in the last year, discussions have been around the urban boundary. Mentioned earlier in response to a question about Barnsdale Road, that the urban boundary is proposed to come down to Barnsdale Road west of Prince of Wales. So squaring off the end, the bottom of Bar Haven. Now conceivably, that's the end of Bar Haven. You know, with, with some of the things that we're doing intensification wise, you see, you see towers actually being built in Bar Haven. That will be the future is as Bar Haven grows down to Barnsdale, the intent is to stop it there. Everything south of there is agricultural land, which means Bar Haven would be bordered by the 416 to the west. The green belt to the north, Rita River to the east. And then of course Barnsdale Road and the agricultural belt that comes in underneath that would be the southern border of Bar Haven and all future growth in Bar Haven. Once that's done, and there's still a bit there to go, of course, but once that's done would be through intensification efforts. Other communities have more ability to grow in the future riverside, south Finley Creek, out to Orleans. There's a lot more ability to grow there. Stittsville to some degree, Kanata North, Kanata South is pretty well done as you see it today with the southern border being Hope Side Road. That's of course, if, if council maintains its commitment to protecting primary cultural lands, which we saw that was a bit wishy washy by council in the last few months, but hopefully we can trudge forward and people can maintain some sort of integrity in terms of actually wanting to keep agricultural land agricultural, which we don't always see unfortunately. So village plans not really discussed too much in this OP at this moment, there will be a look to the secondary plans throughout the city. Following the official plan. Now manatics was just done. Manatics was just reviewed in, in 2015, 2016. So it's a relatively new secondary plan compared to most of the other ones around, but there will be some discussion around the secondary plans. Because the official plan does prescribe the, well, virtually all of rural growth to occur in, in four villages, a carp, Richmond, Manatic and Greeley. Richmond will take the bulk of that because Richmond has the most space. Richmond actually has enough space for up to 5,000 units over the next 30 to 40 years, which is quite significant for Richmond. So I mentioned I'm on the sponsor group also for climate change master plans, always master plan. These are things that we've discussed heavily at council in recent years, climate change master plan. We just approved that in January 2020. We approved a follow-up to that with energy evolution, which is sort of the mechanism to, to administer, to implement the climate change master plan. What's needed, what's going to happen in the future? And how do we meet our, our targets of net zero by 2050, corporate by 2040, but citywide by 2050. And there's a lot to that. And there's lots of moving parts. It's not just city of Ottawa, federal provincial governments, private, private partnership on that as well. You know, one of the key things is that we, we expect the automotive sector to transform quite a lot too, in the coming years. General Motors has said they're going to phase, phase in all electric vehicles and then it'll be just an electric fleet for General Motors by 2030. So that feeds into our climate change master plan. It's not us just doing it alone. It's knowing that this, these things are also happening and the market's changing. I touched on this always master plan already and then ward boundary review. So last war band review we did was 2005. That's the one that brought in Rito and form Rito Goldberg, which we know today. This one is in terms of our ward, we're 21 in the next election. It won't have a huge impact. There's not too many changes. The part of Bar Haven that I represent, which is just a sliver of Half Moon Bay, about 500 homes. That'll shift into the Bar Haven ward. Bar Haven will get split into Bar Haven becomes Bar Haven east and Bar Haven west. And the river forms a new boundary. So there's actually a new ward created in, in 2022. And that'll be a Bar Haven ward. So there'll be two dedicated Bar Haven wards, Riverside South and Finley Creek will be its own ward. But in terms of our ward, not too many changes, just some slight squaring off of some edges where previous urban boundary growth has occurred around Bar Haven and around Stittsville. It will have a new name though. I've mentioned this in the past, you're likely aware of this, the Rito Goldberg name unfortunately stumbled upon some not so pleasant history regarding Mr. Henry Goldberg. And so just looking at putting in place a, a new ward name. Goldberg Township, you know, it is what it is. It had, it had its history. Over township was around from 18, 18 to, to 2001. But it's been the city of Ottawa since and the name Goldberg really just lives on a couple of things here and there, but primarily lives on in the name of the ward and it's just a word name. Just like other ward names, we've had multiple ward names change over the years. And we will still have that. They'll actually probably be about four or five new board names based on some of the changes to the boundaries come, come 2022. So we're 21 would just be another one of those added to the mix. So carrying on just quickly on the budget. I don't want to spend too much time on this stuff because I want to get mostly to, to local stuff. But this is just showing our budget for 2021, 3.94 billion dollars. This is our revenue. So you see almost half of it comes in the form of property taxes. There's other, other things that come in money from federal provincial governments to help fund certain things like social services, of course fees and services as well, charges on there. So that's the revenue and then you flip to the expenditure side of things. And this is where that money is being spent. I mentioned that the, the money coming in from other levels of government, a lot of that, the provincial stuff all goes into that community and social services buckets. Seven hundred forty five, six million dollars. Those are programs prescribed to us that we have to provide. And we are provided funding for that from the, from the province. The capital formation cost is kind of a weird one. It's, it, you don't really explain it well, but in this last slide, just going back to this, the revenue side. We put reserves here and often how that's presented is people think, well, you're rating reserves to keep, to keep going. But we actually replenish the reserves every year. So at the start of the year, when we want cash flow, we use reserves to get things going. And then we actually replenish it in that capital formation cost. So some of that 359 million is actually contribution to reserves. Our reserves at the city right now are between 404 and 50 million dollars. So we have very healthy reserves, which is what you need when you, especially when you have a budget of $4 billion, having 10% covered through reserves is sound. Financing, sound budgeting. When I first got elected, the city had about a hundred million dollars in reserves. So we've done a good job over the few years of increasing those, those reserve accounts to make sure that that money's there when it's needed. So just on high level budget information, like I said earlier, when it comes to the, the COVID impacts, it's very much a maintained services. Budget, trying to be consistent with previous years and with what we're committed to in future years. Not, you know, not funding things on the backs of taxpayers, not going beyond our means as to what we had said we would do in the past. We do have the money coming in from Ontario safe restart, which is helping offset some of the funds, some of the lost revenues that we might be having through, through programming and, and certainly on the transit side of things. So continue to commit to renewal funding, parks, roads, buildings. I mentioned earlier, had the question about bank field road, which is being resurfaced this year, which I'll touch on. That's the same, same thing. So in previous years, we've seen resurfacing of Potter and Long Island and South River Drive, Mantic Main Streets. Other roads nearby, Rita Valley Drive, First Line Road. That's all from a constant commitment to trying to spend more and more on, on renewal. After years of kind of playing catch up and we're still playing catch up. You know, I see a question there, but will we fix the roads on the south, south island? Obviously we did South River Drive, but we haven't, you know, we still have other roads to do and, and South Island Park is, do I have that backwards? I want that backwards. I don't know why. It's been, I've only been around for 40 years, but but there currently aren't any plans for those roads, certain roads like Whitewood, Whitewood Dr. Leach are roads that are in really rough shape, but aren't currently slated for renewal. So that's why we have to keep on pushing that renewal funding, even in the face of, of the COVID pressures to make sure that we're not falling further behind. We can't let, you know, the pandemic push us even further back. So we have to be cognizant of that and make sure that we're spending money in the right spots. And then focus on housing emergency services. So more funds going to, there's new fire station being built to keep up with growth and paramedics as well and police services. And then trying to actually putting more money into housing than we've ever had before. So 15 million dollars annually into housing, creating new housing, trying to get through the, the waitlist of people who live on the streets. In fact, in the last year or so, I think we've gone from around 200, less than 200 families living in shelters, which are just horrible living conditions to over 350 families living in shelters. That's in addition to a single adults that also live and children that live in shelter conditions in the city. So clearly focus on housing is needed and we're still moving forward in that, in that direction. So on some of the local stuff I mentioned, so local park projects, city won't take credit for this one. Centennial Park is absolutely fire stations in Canada. I don't have the exact location, just sort of a question in the, in the chat box opened up about a question where the new fire station is going, but it's in, it's in the Canada area to accommodate a lot of the growth that's going on in that area. So yeah, local park projects, Centennial Park. That's a park that's really driven by the community volunteers went and applied for a provincial through provincial slash federal grant. Got that funding. So that's renewing the skate park and the outdoor rink, putting a new basketball court. It's been something the community's been working on for the past few years, bringing some funding in place. So that's an exciting project and big thanks to the Mancy Culture Parks Recreation Association and other volunteers that have been working heavily on that, on that project. David Bartlett Park, I'm going to touch on the, on the water main projects shortly, but what's happening there, of course, is the water mains coming through and then we're trying to take advantage of that project to make some improvements there. So expanding the parking lot, trying to address the issues that we've seen on, on, on McLean at Barnsdale where, where we see a lot of parking issues there. And then also managed to sneak in a bit of a shoulder widening between along McLean, along the park to widen that space to make it a bit easier for people to, who are walking maybe from, from the Brav Arlena area further down and then up into the park. So trying to widen the, the shoulder a bit there and staff have told me that they're able to, to accommodate that through that project. Because the water main is going to be coming and connecting down to backup water main that feeds into Hillside Gardens. So we're coming up through that road and then we'll resurface it at the same time. Traffic issues, figure of talk about this more through the question, answer sort of period and speeding. I mean, I have a slide on that a little later. So just going to skip on that for now. We can touch on that probably in a question period. Infrastructure, Bankfield Road, mentioned that's being resurfaced. Fee streets are part of the same project. Makes sense. It's a small street, but it's right, right there attached to Bankfield. So both those are being resurfaced. Mantic Main Street, you know, that in previous years, we've kind of done it in phases. We did the north part, north of Bridge Street, we did Riva drive all the way down to Roger Stevens and then brought that up to, to Island View. There's a new intersection going in at Bridgeport and Mantic Main Street triggered by the phasing of Mentos development. And then the rest of Main Street will be resurfaced down to Eastman. And we have a sidewalk extension as well. So sidewalk renewal, south of, south of Courier and then into a sidewalk extension down to the new dock. So that's all supposed to be happening this summer. And I just put it on here just so that, you know, it's, it's a very localized project. We've got some, some, many people in the village are aware of contamination issues from stemming from a dry cleaner from many years ago and, and we've been monitoring the, the water flow and the, the contamination hadn't been migrating for, for many years, but we did have noticed some issues on Whitewood and there's a few properties that we're going to be bringing, bringing a water main to working with the residents there. It's only about seven properties actually impacted, but nine properties are going to be fed into the water system from there. So that's something we've been working on locally with those residents in the city. We passed a motion at the city back in February to, to advance that project. So if you see construction going on this summer, likely late summer, early fall on Whitewood, that is what that is about. So, and just really briefly on the communication stuff. So you know, this obviously is important to do these types of town halls best we can. You know, we have, we've always done certain things. We always have the website. We've always done, you know, Facebook and, and Twitter, and we have the newspaper columns. But they aren't as, you know, they're plentiful. A lot of these newspapers used to be weekly, you know, they're only bi-weekly now. So we started some different things. We moved our e-newsletter to weekly. We've tried to put more information in there, up to date info on COVID. We put our columns in there as well. And then we started a podcast just, just about a year ago, actually. So it's called the 21 podcast and we focus on a lot of local issues. And if you ever have any topics that you feel that you'd like to hear me discuss, it's, I do it with one of my, one of my colleagues, Steve Warren, who has a lot of experience in, in radio over the years. And he hosts a number of podcasts as well. So he helps me with that and, and it's a good opportunity. It's only, the episodes are about half an hour, 40 minutes. And we sort of dive into topics in a bit better way than maybe I can in the written word. So my column, you know, only, I can only fit so much in there. So we kind of expand on some things through the podcast. We've had guests on the past that was able to have real upset support services featured in one of the podcasts. We had their executive director join me for, for that episode. So that was fun. And I mentioned, of course, the newsletter. So speeding, I mentioned this. So this is the key thing. So you know, we, when it comes to, when it comes to the speeding issues, obviously we hear a lot about it, but when it comes to auto police, they report or they deploy their enforcement based on, on online reporting. So this is kind of the key thing. Auto Police.ca slash online reporting. You'll get to a page. It looks like this and you click on that link and you can file your report. I've done it before on, on different things in different areas that I've seen. And it's quite easy. And when they get reports through that, that's where they'll, that's where they'll generally provide their enforcement. Obviously in the previous years, we've seen enforcement on Bridge Street. We have a lot of, a lot going on in Bridge Street with the speed display boards. The community safety zone that we've placed there. So it is double fines in that area around the school. So we've tried to, we've tried our best to try to address that issue on, on Bridge Street, but certainly we do have enforcement there from time to time. We did a funny project there. I think it was a couple of years ago and, and it was, we put a cutout of a, a police officer. And the idea was, you know, slow down. There's a police officer standing there, but it was clearly a cutout. And then the next week, the actual police officer who is the cutout was to be there actually, you know, with the, with the radar gun, taking people. Unfortunately, people kept on stealing the cardboard, cut it. I don't know if that man somewhere exists in someone's basement, but we had two of them, two of them actually got stolen. So it was a, it was a little pilot project that didn't, it didn't go so well because we kept on losing our mock police officer. So just onto that, then just the content of us. So I'll just leave that for a second. In case you guys want to write anything down. Obviously most of you likely know how to reach me, but that's our, that's our info there. So our website changed with the whole, you know, over and stuff. We, we made some, some shifts in the last few months. So our website's now team21.ca. It's all the same info. Twitter account, team21. And then of course my Twitter account, Scottoff21, which really just me tweeting about sports and random occurrences and debating people who don't live here. And then my email address, of course, scottmofford.ca. So that's that. I'm going to shift over now to the other, to the other presentation, which will focus more on, on development. So move and I'll start staring a different direction. All right. Bring my screens back up. Great. So here's our lovely village Mantic. Hopefully you guys can all see that. So nice little arrow of you with a bunch of random pictures that you cannot see. So I will help you with that. First things first, I want to zoom in on, on the main streets, on the village core. That's where most of the action's happening. Right down the downtown core. So we'll, we'll just zoom in there and you see here. So you have actually, you can see the previously resurfaced Mantic Main Street. It's all nice and dark. So you see in here, the core, you can see some of the things that I've done recently. Of course, the, the new retirement home, the independent living center at Dickinson Streets. And Clap Lane is now open. A lot of that construction that we've had in, in the core right along around Watson's Mill has sort of dissipated. Thankfully that was tough a year and a half to two years. Want to just focus on some of the things that we're seeing, some of the applications that we have in around Main Street. We'll start with some of the older ones, then move to what's, what's current and, and not yet submitted. So first things first, this is a bit of an old one. We actually approved this at council back in, geez, I think it might've been back in 2017 already. It kind of fell by the wayside for a bit. It has been, the application has been reactivated, but this is where we settled on the design. So many of you might remember there was a sign up for a few years and it was a, I think people likened it to a sort of an office, an office park look. Someone said it looked like a diamond storage building, which you know what? Diamond storage buildings can look very nice, but maybe not at the corner of Bridge and Main. So we worked with the owner of the sites, the sites narrow, as you know, so we worked with the owner of the community heavily and, and came up with a, with this design. And that's what is currently the active design for that site. So still no timeline on that project. It's a fully commercial office space building. So no residential aspects to this one, as opposed to many of the rest do have commercial and residential components in them. So that's 5514. So that's the old false house property at the corner of Bridge and Main. We just go down the street a little bit. This is right next to the black dog. You can kind of see it on the edge. This is the tea room property. So Team Realty has proposed to, they have signed up on the side of the building saying future home of. This is something they submitted quite a while ago, but it hasn't, I think it's just been, they just submitted a resubmission, but the design itself is very, it hasn't changed. So this is the proposed design. So that's currently available. And if you go to, if you ever want to see what's going on in the village, anywhere else, there's go to auto dot ca slash dev apps, D E V A P P S. And you can find all applications. You can find current applications and you can find old applications going back to a few years. And that's where you'll find these things. This is 5536 Mantic Main Street. And that's what's currently slated to be built there. Just jumping down the road a bit, this is the old Don Hamilton Law Office property at the corner of Highcroft and Main Street, right across the road from the new RBC location. So the building to be, will be replaced. This is a two-story, fully commercial office space building. This, the zoning was all there. So on all these, I'll, I'll tell you when the zoning isn't there. So put up on all these, the zoning's in place. So it just ends up being a site plan application. This is another one. This went through a few design iterations. I'm always quick to work with, with Donna Smith, Grace Thrasher in their roles representing this community on design elements. So there's, there's a lot of things that go into some of these files and we, we always try to work with the applicant on some design features. So when you actually look at the, the, the building material list, I don't think the picture does it justice so much. But when you actually look at the building materials list, they are taking some elements from the village and adapting it into this, into this proposal. So there's that. And then just the rear side of it. That's from, that's looking at it from, from Highcroft. So that's, that's what's being proposed there. That's actually the site plan has been approved for that, for that project, for that property. We jump across the street. So this is a, this is a recent submission. So this is 5597, 5497 Main Street. It's directly next to the plaza. The initial proposal is at the road front. Commercial on the main, on the bottom floor and residential with rear parking. So the applicant met with the community association not that long ago and has been in discussion with myself as well. It's, this is a bit of a tricky one. So when we approved the secondary plan, we extended the main street core designation out to Bankfield Road. We caught the three properties on the, on the back channel. So the three properties, the small little houses in a row north of the plaza, north of the RBC, we're all sort of caught in that same destination. So the designation that we imposed on that says ground floor residential is prohibited and the buildings must be built to the street front. So they have to be commercial and they have to be built on the road. And it creates a bit of challenges because one, you have then parking in the rear on the back channel, directly across from, from homes on the island. And you also increase the, the ins and outs on Main Street, which it's not really the part of Main Street that needs more ins and outs and more traffic flow. Cause we do have some challenges there. Really when we did that designation, we wanted to unlock some potential on the west side of Main Street. But really that designation on the, on the commercial residential piece is really designed for south of, south of Bridge Street. Trying to keep that, that commercial core. Trying to keep that, um, that commercial core intact, but also add some residential pieces to the core of the village. So this one, I've been working with the owner on it and he did provide me with an updated submission which I'm trying to work with city staff on because it's a bit of a quirky situation. Because of the secondary plan, staff have to oppose this proposal. So this is, you know, it's parking in the front. It's still a three-story building, but it's entirely residential. So the zoning doesn't permit entirely residential. The zoning doesn't permit a setback of greater than, than a few meters. So what you see right here. So I'm still working through, through some things with the city and the applicant on this, have to reconnect with the applicant, uh, because we need to do some some quirky things with the zoning and the, and the secondary plan. Uh, it might actually be a situation where staff have to oppose the application. And I would then approve it. Staff aren't doing anything wrong. They're following the policy directions that we've set. But they just don't really fit here. So our policy piece, I'd like to change the policies, but right now this application is active. Um, so just still working on that one. And I know if anyone has any questions specifically, we reach out to me, but I'm, as of right now, I'm still working through it with staff and with the applicant. Before I can provide a proper update on where we're really going with this one. Um, but the, the previous design, this, this one here, the, the drive line, I don't know if my cursor shows, but there's a sort of a, an alley, a driveway under the building into the rear lot, which would have been right next to the R B C exit. Um, so I'm sorry. So with the new revised plan, the parking's in the front, it's less parking, it's still underground parking for residential. Uh, but the exit and entrance is actually further north on the property, which will separate a bit more, but it'd also be less traffic flow than if it was a commercial property. Uh, so it should address some of those concerns, but still function as a, as a residential piece with some intensification, which, you know, will, will help feed the, the business community in, in the core. So I'll just move on to, uh, for down this one here. Not yet live, not yet submitted, but the owner has been working through some design. Sorry, that's a bit of a rough picture. It's because it's so big, I think. This is fifty five twenty seven Manic Main Street. So this is the vacant lot. If you've been here as long as me, you remember there used to be a Petro Canada station on that corner, Carl Polster's Petro Canada station. It's currently been a vacant lot where Pizza Atlantica has been the last few years. So this is obviously a three-story building, residential, second and third floor and commercial on the main floor. There's even actually, I think, uh, medical, um, medical practice that's interested already in, in being on the, on the main floor of this building. So that, this had went through some designs as well. Uh, again, community was involved and it started out very very modern, very sort of glass metal type design. And you can't see it in this image, but there's a lot of neat design features in the brickwork on the, on the upper floors, and that's all limestone in the facade on the main floor. Um, so some interesting, again, some interesting features here. Parking is in the rear of this building. So it's, it, it fits the corner. And then you actually go through where that fake car is parked and there's a Lamborghini, uh, a yellow Lamborghini coming out of that sort of car slip to get back into a rear parking lot for this building. Um, so that's, that's that proposal. It hasn't yet been submitted. So it's not something that's live. I'm showing you now because I wanted to keep people updated on what's going on, uh, but that is a proposal for that corner at the moment. So moving just outside the core, uh, this is something that was just approved by council recently. This is a residential uh, intensification on Highcroft. It is, um, the first couple lots behind. So I showed you the proposed building, the proposed replacement building for the Hamilton Law Office at the bottom of Highcroft. This would be the two lots behind it. So four units will now face on to, four single units will face on to, on to Highcroft. Going up the hill and then in behind would be six more units and it would look like this. So you see on the right side of this picture is, will be the backside of the Main Street property, which I showed you earlier, that two-story building and then a private road access coming in off of Highcroft to feed into the six lots at the back and then the four, the four units facing onto Highcroft. Um, so we had a public meeting on this just a couple of months ago. I believe it was February and then this went to agricultural affairs committee and council in March for approval. This did require a zoning amendment to permit this. So that's why it went through. Uh, the rest of the applications I've shown you so far have, have all been within the zoning and the secondary plan, except for fifty five, fifty four ninety seven, which I I have brought outside of the second area plan policy and zoning, uh, which I'm still working on. Uh, so that's that, uh, for the core. So go back out, zoom back out and go look at, I believe, I'm going up to David Bartlett Park now. Yes, I am. So this is that water main link project that's currently ongoing. So it's the Manic Water Main Project, which started a couple of years ago, because we already did the river road, uh, piece. And now what you're seeing is the connection under from Walter Upton Collins Park on the other side of the river, under the river through David Bartlett Park and connecting over to a new water main that connects the main water main under Reva Drive and then comes back into the Hillside Gardens. Water network as well. So it gives a dual access for, for that water main because up until now, had there been a break anywhere north of us under Long Fields, then Manic would have been out of water. Uh, so this is a they call it redundancy in the line, uh, to make sure that there's backup water. Water mean. And then again, that goes through, right through David Bartlett Park. So it's currently under construction because of the, the extent of its close, because the extent of the work required. Uh, and it had to go under the river as well, under that bridge at Barnesdale. So that's why that closure's been in place for quite some time. The next part of that is on the south end of the island. So you can see on this portion of the map, you'll see that, that northern link. And then it feeds into the phase two of this, which is Long Island. And it's a water main that comes all the way down Long Island, crosses Bridge Street, down Van Vleet, at the very end of, of South Island, which is through the Barney McCarty landing. Will go under the back channel and then up Antachi Lane and connect into the Minto Development at Bridgeport. So that's required by Minto for their future phasing, because again, they need that redundancy in the line. They need that extra capacity. Should anything, any issues occur. Uh, so that's still a couple of years away. Uh, that's not it's again, it's phase two. Uh, so we're still awaiting the exact timeline, construction timeline of when that'll occur. Just wanted to bring it up to that. And also originally, that wasn't planned to be allowed connections to, but city staff are working through through that to hopefully come up with, I believe the intent is to come up with a, a solution where water connections will be permitted into that line. And back out and I'm just going to zip out, um, out to First Line Road. There have been, uh, these were already approved. So the one I'm going to show you now already approved developments, but I think work has been kind of going forward with that. So I've had some questions from some folks along Wicklow and Scarf Gate, you know, what's going on back behind us? And this is what's going on. So this is, if you actually see, you can kind of see right here at the bottom. So first line road is comes down to, to Bankfield into that new set of lights. A lot of that development's already in place. So McManus Avenue runs through to the backside, Cabrel Place comes off here and heads north and then there to be extended and connected. So Cabrel, you see the lots, the gray, the gray shaded lots are what's already there. And then you can see the new phases and that's what's currently under, under construction. And in the very middle of that is a piece of land that, uh, is completely landlocked. Its address was actually Scarf Gate, because originally it did come further east and connect into the, into the estates. But with Mud Creek there, there's no potential to actually connect that. So it's completely landlocked property. And it gets unlocked by the development that you're seeing that wraps around it. So that piece looks like this. It's all very, uh, consistent with what's, uh, with what you're seeing, with, what's, what's already down there. Everything down there, of course, is on is on well and septic, uh, so larger lots. And that will be the final piece of that, um, that development down there unless something happens north of here, uh, connecting up to Bankfield Road. But as of right now, the landowners there haven't made any moves for development in that area. So that'd be around the, around the, the dealership, the dealership there, that land all the way down the first line could conceivably be developed at some point. Um, it would be very similar to what you're already seeing off of, off of uh, First Line Road on that side of, on that side of Mud Creek. So finally, I think the last thing I did, I want to talk about here is just the Mogany Community. So we go here. Obviously, many of us are familiar with this community. Uh, phase one is already complete. Phase two is well underway and they're starting to get into pretty close into their phase three. So there's a school lot and there's two parks and the two parks right now are currently out for consultation. We have a good website. It's called, I think, if you just Google engage Ottawa, uh, you'll be able to find information about any constatations that we're doing. And the two parks here are up on Engage Auto right now for, for discussion. And I'll run you through those. So if you see on the north side, the little green, the green, the tiny one, that's just a smaller park. And then your big community park right next to the school. Both of those are out for consultation on their design and they look like this. So this is the northern one. This is the small parquet. I mean, it's not incredibly small. It still has a number of features in it. Um, but it's so proposed to have some play structures in there and that's sort of the proposal here that you see. So Minto will be building this. So junior, senior play area. But the big piece, the big one is the next one, which is the the large community park adjacent to the school. So you see the school would be on the right side of this, um, large soccer field and then all the amenity space that you're looking for. So it has an outdoor rink. It has a basketball court, has a splash pad and it has junior and senior play equipment. So there's the proposed, uh, configuration with the play area. The junior play area swing set as well as on the north side of that piece. Well, on the north side of this picture, uh, you can kind of see that splash pad. And the concept for the splash pad, uh, options, these are different options. And this is what's out for conservation right now. So in all those things I just showed you, those are all the different options on the various pieces, the various play equipment pieces. And those are, uh, currently out there. So you know, the good news with some of the, the rapid growth we're seeing as a result of COVID, for whatever reason, COVID has driven development area and a lot prices. Uh, so the demand is higher. So these types of amenities will actually come to Manic sooner rather than later. So I mean, from a recreation perspective, it's a exciting time, Manic, because we have the renewal of Centennial Park. And then we have what's going on at this new community park down in, in the mental community. So that is, uh, that I'm going to close that off. And turn my light on in my office because it seems to be getting a little bit dark on me. Just give me a second. Right. So, uh, thank you. Question. So I will, I will just touch on that, uh, that piece. We were talking briefly, sort of glossed over. Glossed over the Bridge Street stuff and the, and the traffic stuff. So obviously, long before I was elected and probably long after I'll be elected, there'll be, um, uh, concerns, uh, traffic concerns. And one of the main ones is, is truck traffic on Bridge Street. It, it's, you know, it's something that I think had gotten better, you know, with the, with the Strand Harbor Shore Bridge, we saw a huge reduction in traffic. But we've also seen, you know, with, with more construction going on, especially in, you know, the south end of Ottawa, we're seeing more, more traffic again. So I've been trying to work with, with, um, a consultant on that. So brought someone in, someone I know, someone that's worked at the city before and his name's Christopher Gordon. And we've been sort of tossing some ideas around as to what can, can be done. So he's currently working with city staff on trying to bring forward almost a report that would, that would sort of look at short-term, midterm and long-term options as to how we could like actually set a plan in place instead of you know, just hoping that things will change or whatever, but we need to, we need to feed into this, to the, the transition master plan, which is going to be ongoing the next two years, won't be approved until twenty twenty three. Maybe even twenty twenty four because of the, the COVID impacts on that. But, um, certainly something that we're, we're trying to focus on and I've been working with the N B C on this too. So hope to have something a bit more on that. Uh, but you know, some of the concerns we're seeing, we're trying to report to city staff and get the understanding there is what, what the issue is, is you know, the, the intersection of Bridge and Main and the jumping the curb doesn't make it exactly that safe for pedestrians. So, uh, working that through and, um, trying to address that. So I'll have more on that when I, when it comes out, we're just, again, just working with, uh, with my consultant on that and city staff to see you know, what the options are to at least put a dent in some of the traffic that we've seen come back. Alright, so I'm going to go into, um, the Q and A. So some of the questions were asked already and I've tried to answer them as we went. The most recent one was when will the new mental parks and school be built? I don't know about the school. So the way it works is that when when a development comes forward, um, the school board, school board is offered space. Do they want space? The O C D S B did say they did want, said they did want a school space. But I do not know of a timeline. You have seven years. So the school board has seven years. And that, at the end of the seven years, they have to buy it or give it back to Minto. My guess is they will buy it. I think they'll, there's obviously a, a need for, for a new school. Man, it's a public school is not exactly on the new side. And we know that the growth is there to, to warrant a new school. So, but there's no timeline on the school yet. The parks, I don't have an exact timeline. But you know, the fact that we're with design right now, uh, will certainly lead to that. And Minto does have sort of carriage of when it gets built. And to be honest, it's in their best interest to, uh, build those parks because it helps drive their sales. Especially that community park with the amenities that exist there. With the, with the splash pad, um, certainly, uh, you know, a big draw in that community. So, um, I, I don't know the exact timeline, but I don't think it's going to be, uh, too far into the future before you see, uh, some movement on those types of things. So a question about, we talked about, um, the sidewalk extension down to, uh, down to Eastman and where the, the, the dock is, but then south of that. So that's been much easier said than done project for some reason. Um, you know, I've been looking at what's odd there is that there was actually a paved shoulder. And when the, when the water main was extended out to the regionals develop with the EQ homes development, the shoulder grows reverted to gravel. And they were told not to, not to renew it or not to put it back to, to hard surface because the city's going to come in and repave the road. Of course, that was pushed off. So now we're sitting there with this gravel shoulder still. Um, so at the least, we will, we will end up with, we will have paved shoulders the whole way out. I'm trying to get, uh, more than that. In the village of cars, when we did a, just a run of the mill storm, stormwater, storm sewer renewal project. We were able to do some things, some inventive things on a relatively narrow road allowance to get a multi-use pathway on the side of the street. And that's really what I'm trying to look at. We had, uh, included it in a submission for funding from the federal government. Um, but the funding for that was contingent on it had to be done within twenty twenty one and the city couldn't design and build what's needed there, uh, within the timeframe required to get that funding. So I know they are looking at other at other, um, options, other funding options to see what we can do there. But it is still something that we're, we're pushing for. We want better pedestrian space along Main Street and to Century Road. And so so that's the kind of the focus of what we're trying to, what we're trying to get there. Um, it's unfortunate it's taken so long, even looking back at, uh, at Minto's subdivision agreement. All they're committed to do is provide a, a paved surface on their frontage on the east side of the road. Well, of course, their frontage isn't really that much. They only front a little bit of Bridgeport, uh, with the side yard and that little parquet at the front. And then, of course, the piece on the south side out to, out to, um, Century Road on, on Main Street. So their frontage on Main Street is actually relatively, you know, non-existent in terms of actually creating a proper pedestrian space. Um, so we're trying to work through that and see what we can do and hopefully we can come up with something a bit better than what's there. Uh, what they've done in century is quite nice, but it doesn't really connect to anything on Main Street. So that's still ongoing. So a question was, why does your plan for truck traffic look at local? So a question was, why does your plan for truck traffic look at locally generated traffic? Sorry, we look at all traffic. I'm not sure what the, what that, I mean, local traffic's permitted, uh, whether, whether Main Street and Bridge Street were truck routes or not, you'd still have local, all local traffic, local trucks are, are permitted. It's the three trucks and stuff that we're trying to get to balance it out better. I mean, every, every bridge crossing. Steve Hogsback and Saint Patrick over the river are bridge, are truck routes, sorry, uh, in the truck route network for the city. The question, you know, the, the issue is South of Hun Club, uh, Manatic takes more than its fair share. You know, and can we, can we see, uh, more, more separation, more, you know, spread of those trucks? And the, the big issue we have is the fact that we've got this great bridge north of us and we're, we're trying to get a, you know, Barnesdale upgraded and have a interchange at Barnesdale to provide more options. But when you go across that bridge over to Riverside South, um, really gets you nowhere. And so we have some long-term plans, you know, trying to capitalize on the Hard Rock proposal as well to extend our alarm strong outs. So what we want to see is in the TMP, let's elevate our alarm show, let's get that moving a bit faster and get that on the truck with master planet to Albion to provide a better truck route network because right now it doesn't exist in the southern. And so as a result, we see, we end up burying the brunt of it in Manatic. Question about sidewalk extension along Long Island Road, I believe. So that is a space issue. That is a space and, um, and drainage issue. Along Long Island. So you have, you have somewhat of a sidewalk north of the, so the island was obviously developed over, you know, a couple of generations. And the standards changed. And when you have the part directly north of, of man's public school, it's quite narrow through there. And there's really no space to, to put a sidewalk. It's, there's no, the drainage isn't there, of course, it's got to go into the ditch. And there's no place for sidewalk. And it's been a tough thing. So what we've tried to focus on on Long Island is, is managing that, that volume of traffic. So it's it too is a community safety zone. Uh, as you get down near Saint Leonard's, you have, we've, you know, we've started to implement the flex stakes along Long Island, uh, in front of Saint Leonard's. Uh, we've done the, the street line painting. We've tried to, um, you know, do what we can from a traffic coming perspective to to, um, to address that, to address the speeding along, along Long Island. I mean, by and large, a lot of traffic is local. So it's, you know, I think that's where the community really stepped up with their keep it to forty campaign. It was a, a speed campaign. You know, driven by the community for the community, uh, to recognize that when you're on certain streets, like the speeding that we saw on, on roads like Potter. You know, it's, there's no need for it. You're not getting to Potter anywhere faster than by using Potter than any other street. So a lot of that traffic is local traffic. So keep, keep in mind, you know, you're, this is your village, uh, be mindful of the speed that you're traveling. And I think that's the same can be said for Long Island, especially when, when we see, you know, extended closures of, of Barnesdale. And then you still have speeding concerns on Long Island. Well, there's, there's no one coming through, you can't get through. So it's, it, that's, that's always been a bit of a tough one. And, and, and I think the, you know, I commend the community association for putting forward a a traffic calming campaign of their own to sort of take ownership of that, to get the community to take ownership of that. But, you know, we're always open to, you know, we have a traffic calming budget that we can do certain things with, and we've tried to implement as much as we can on Long Island and Potter, where to with the, the common speeding areas, uh, but still, you know, happy to, to look at things in that, in that respect. It's just sort of, I think I just touched on that. So the comment came about speed bumps. So I've you know, unless you have an urban cross section with speed bumps. So it means you have curbs, right? So if you can place a speed bump in between curbs, then it doesn't really work. Um, what we see with speed bumps in, in rural, rural roads with no curbs and shoulders and ditches that cars will often just go around the, you know, they'll drive one tire up and then one tire around. I can show you places where this has been, I can show you the grooves in the front lawn of where, where these things have been tried. It, it's, you know, it's, it's a headache for emergency services. It's a headache for snow plowing. And what you're doing is you're punishing everyone. Like, uh, a, a speed bump punishes every single road user. That person who uses that road every single day and drives forty every single day is not the problem. Yet they've got to go over that speed bump every single day and they have to, they're the ones that has to use it more, more than anyone. And we find that the people that the offenders do still just want to get from point A to point B as fast as possible. So they speed up between. So now you have heavy braking, acceleration, all these different things. Speed bumps, they, they just don't have the, the, the impact, uh, positive impact that, that often they want. So it's a bit of a challenge in that regard. So my question, this anonymous attendee is asking a lot of questions. View on the increased proliferation of warehouse applications in the area. So I don't know if it's, I don't know if I call it a proliferation. There's, you know, there's the Amazon facility on boundary. There's a new Amazon facility in, in Bar Haven. And then there's the application that we saw from Broccolini, uh, over two years ago now. Uh, sorry, just two years ago, uh, in North Core on a site that's been zoned to permit a large warehouse facility and truck, um, depot for the last twenty-four years. And then the one, the, the one different one is the one that's just off of, um, off of Prince of Wales and in between Prince of Wales and which if I believe it is in the Maraville, the South Napian business park. That's one. I mean, this, this is a reality. The, I don't maybe people lament this. I mean, I see the Amazon truck, I see trucks delivering Amazon parcels throughout this ward and throughout this community. Day in, day out, the proliferation is in e-commerce. It's that people are at home and they're ordering stuff and it's constant. And, you know, the Mantic post office was expanded just for e-commerce. That's why it's bigger. It's bigger because it was the busiest post office, uh, in this area for parcel delivery. The companies know that, the companies that, Amazon knows this, they know where their business is, they know that to cut costs, they need to be closer to where their, their end user is, their end user is here. So I'm not surprised that we're seeing more, more, um, applications. Well, with before in general, I mean, there's a, there's over a dozen of Amazon facilities in the GTA. The more the, the market shifts to e-commerce, the more you're going to see warehousing and distribution centers. I think before COVID, the market share for e-commerce was around twelve, thirteen percent. That's now up to about thirty percent of all business of all retail is now through e-commerce. That's going to, that's going to sorely hurt small business, but people are at home, they're going online. And they're ordering from these companies and that's what's, that's what's happening. So the market will respond. If you have a community that is heavily interested in ordering, uh, online, the market will absolutely respond to that and will bring the online depot closer to where those orders are going. So if you, if people don't like warehouse warehouses and e-commerce distribution facilities, stop ordering online. Question about the businesses going in the new building behind the beer store. So that is the building that burnt down. I'll be enough, the night before that building burnt down, I had burgers from the Village Butcher and I had cupcakes from V's cupcakes. Interestingly enough, I had a steak right before the Rita restaurant burnt down too. That's not, that's completely unrelated. So don't. I didn't say that. But so I do not know, I do not know what, uh, what the businesses are going in that. I know that the, it was sold. So the previous owner, when it was burnt, uh, down, he sold it to a new owner. And that's the one building I have not spoken to him recently, uh, so I don't know what he has going in there at this moment. Question about where the nail salon property. So we, we talked, we went through the app, we went through all those different applications, those designs along Main Street. Where the, the old, you know, Red Brick bungalow was, which I was happy to see removed. Where that was, the owner of that building is also, that property is also interested in building a, a three-story building with commercial and residential, but they have not yet submitted anything. So the owner of that building met with me probably two, three years ago, I'm going to say it was in person. So it was longer than a year ago and it was, um, yeah, they provided it, they provided a, a proposal to me that wanted to do a, a drive-through in the middle with commercial on either side and then above that two floors of residential with parking in behind. It was a nice design. It fits in well with what we've seen on the other applications, uh, but nothing submitted yet. He, his intent was to build it and live in it. But still nothing from that. So another question, uh, about, do you see the area between Century Road, Roger Stevens along the river developing over time? No. No, I don't. The everything's south of Manatic is agricultural. Everything north of Manatic is agricultural. Obviously the river is to the east and it's marginal agricultural to the west. So when you cross first line road over to Prince of Wales, that is marginal. Now that all said, there is nothing. There's nothing on the horizon when it comes to village battery expansions. Uh, nothing is required. Uh, we have capacity in those villages that I mentioned, um, for beyond twenty fifty. Now, will COVID change that? Will COVID change some of our, our residential, our previous residential land surveys in terms of lot availability? There certainly are a lot more rural lots being sold right now, uh, than before. I also expect that to, um, to tone down at some point. You know, some of the values that we're seeing, you know, vacant lots being sold for three hundred thousand dollars. That isn't sustainable. But as of right now, our residential land survey for the rural area shows capacity in villages like Richmond and Manatic, uh, for the next thirty plus years. So I don't expect that we'll be talking about village battery expansion Manatic for some time. At least not while I'm around. No, I'm elected. I might still be alive, but I won't be elected. And, um, so I don't expect to see anything. So if, if Manic does grow, logically it would grow towards Prince of Wales. I don't see it going north or south because of that agricultural land. Unless again, earlier, as I said, future councils just stop caring about agricultural land. And let's see what else. Comment with great staff at the post office. I agree. They're good people there. Okay. So I'm just, I'm just zipping through between the Q and A and the chat box. I don't want to miss anything. If I do miss something, feel free to email me. Again, scott dot mafia dot C A. If I have missed any of your questions. If there's anything I've said that you want to follow up on with me, uh, by all means, uh, reach out to me. Do I know anything about the property potential development across from the vet on scarf gate? So, uh, in our secondary plan, there were three properties along scarf gate. One is addressed on, I want to say it's, I'm going to get it wrong, but it's, I want to say like eleven forty-five. Beaverwood. I think I'm wrong in that. But, uh, so the property, the, the white farmhouse there that goes up the hill just past the street to just past Dr. Leach, that property there, the property in the middle, which is fifty-five, forty-four scarf gate and then the house, I want to say eleven eighty-six, um, maple. Those three properties were all sort of identified in the secondary plan as having potential for a future, uh, development expansion. Based on its proximity to the core and where they are. Uh, Donna says eleven eighty-five. I said eleven forty-five. Good job, Donna. I was wrong. See, people don't think I admit when I'm wrong, but here I am, saying I'm wrong. I'm recording it. I'm actually recording me saying I'm wrong. See, it's, I'm turning over a new leaf. I'm forty years old. I'm getting better at this. So the, the scarf gate piece, um, I have spoken to someone, someone did reach out and ask about something with that property. I don't know if it's officially sold or if it's conditional, uh, but they were looking at a development there and it would be intensified type of development in that area. It is, it would be a service property and that's the kind of thing, that's why I mentioned those three properties along scarf gate. They do have access to both water and sewer. They're easy to service because they're at the top of that hill. And you can build into the, into the bank to the escarpment to, to build something that sort of staggers down to, uh, to scarf gate. So I have been informed that somebody wants to build something there that's relative, relatively high density. Now I say relative to Manatic, I mean, no one's coming into Manatic and asking to build fifteen to twenty stories by any means. But something that's, that's in that, that mix. Um, back, we did a secondary plan, you can remember that I, I did talk about five stories. I did talk about, right now there's nothing in the village that's permitted higher than three stories. I don't think it's reasonable to believe that that's always going to be the case. I do expect at some point someone's going to come in and want to build higher than three stories. And we're going to have to look at that. We're going to have to figure out, um, where that fits and if that works. I don't know if that's going to be scarf gate, but I'm just saying that's those are the types of properties. Where you're going to see that, that type of push, uh, in the village core. People are going to be looking to, to intensify that area. We're already seeing a little bit. But nothing too out of, out of, uh, out of scope with what, uh, with what we talked about previously in the secondary plan process. But I do believe there will be some, uh, some movement on that. So anything there though, I mean, if, if you're talking about higher than three stories, uh, anywhere, that's a rezoning. That's not, that's not site plan. That has to go through a full rezoning. And an official plan amendment. Um, so that's a, that's a very open process with the community. Um, so as, as I have, if I, if I get anything on that property, if someone, um, gives me more, uh, concrete ideas on that, I've seen nothing in writing. So I'll, I'll provide that back. I'll make sure I provide updates through, through our various communications that I've showed before with the messenger and and then of course that goes out in the newsletter as well. Another question about the industrial piece. Do I see more industrial development in the areas south to Roger Stevens? So happy to touch on this because we, we talked a lot about when we're doing the official plan review, we talk a lot about industrial development because the four sixteen. You know, someone would think it has a lot of potential, but the four sixteen runs through either sensitive environmental lands, runs the green belt or runs the agricultural lands. If those lands in North Core that are there today were not rezoned in nineteen ninety-seven, we would not be having a conversation about developing on those lands today. They'd still be agricultural land and we would not be rezoning them. Even though they're on the four sixteen at Roger Stevens, we would not be rezoning those lands today. We would not permit industrial development on the four sixteen at Roger Stevens. And we would not permit it at, uh, Bankfield either, because Bankfield is also surrounded by agricultural land on all four corners. So the other three corners at Roger Stevens are going to see nothing. Again, unless a future council decides that they don't give a shit about agricultural land and then, you know, things can change. But I don't see that. And I think with the, the community out here stays strong on that. If the rural community stays strong and protecting agricultural land. No one's making any more of it. I haven't seen any development applications to create new agricultural land. So this isn't something that we can just sort of skirt away on. I've tried to make sure the council is, is committed to that. Um, had a motion that I worked on with one of my colleagues, Council Shantiri back, uh, this time last year, uh, to make sure that council was committed to protecting agricultural land. Some members of council decided to waiver on that because they felt, uh, development a thousand meters away from a, a a train line. And I'm going to say a station because the station's not there, uh, was more important than protecting agricultural land. Oh, well, it's not currently firm. So who cares? Yeah, that's called land manipulation, uh, and it matters. So, you know, don't be manipulated by developers who own agricultural land that just sit on it. That's not okay. Uh, we need to be better than that. So that's why the, that's why the soil study, the soils criteria matters. Because whether you farm it or not, it doesn't change the value of the land. So, um, in terms of that then, so you just have that property, you have that property that was owned in nineteen ninety-seven, uh, to permit industrial development in North Core. And the application that came before us, I did something a little bit unique with it. That's, that's hasn't been done in Ottawa before. And maybe it's, it's, I, everything's zoned. A lot of times it's zoned from, uh, from a floor space. So you know, what, what kind of, what kind of floor space can you cover in terms of a building, a building size? I implemented a zoning that was based on, on volume. So volume of the building, they wanted to go higher. So the site previously had two caps to it. It was eleven meters and fifteen meters. So you could have built the seven hundred thousand square foot, uh, fifteen meter tall building on the back of the property, fifteen meters from the backyard of the homes on Third Line Road. So through the zoning, I implemented a hundred meter setback from the homes on Third Line Road. Which completely saves that, that berm, that large berm there. There's a hill, tree hill that stays. We actually rezoned that to open space. So you can't even build in it at all. And then with the zoning on the volume side, I took what the capacity was for the site And then with the zoning on the volume side, I took what the capacity was for the site with its current zoning. So with its current zoning, you could per- permit it up to one point four million square feet of floor space. This proposal was seven hundred thousand square feet. And they wanted to go higher. So fifteen meters, we permitted them to go up to twenty-two meters. But then I took that extra seven meters and I took it away from the ground by ca- calculating the volume. So we zoned the entire site with a volume-based perspective, which means the higher you go, the less space you have on the ground to develop. So the total, if I remember correctly, the total volume available on the site is one point nine million cubic meters, which sounds like a lot. But a seven hundred thousand square foot building that's twenty-two meters high takes up one point four million cubic meters of that space, which means you have a building that takes up only fifteen percent of the lot size of the property size, but you actually only have five hundred thousand cubic meters of volume left, which means you won't end up with a site that is saturated with with large buildings because as they get more automated, you need less parking. So a site like that in North Core could have actually fit to seven hundred thousand square foot warehouses. Now it won't. It's one big one. And if someone wants to come in and do something smaller on the site because you have the the ground to do it along the four sixteen and along Roger Stevens, you can do it, but it's going to be smaller buildings. Um, so you won't see the reason why that one in Bar Haven looks so big and boundary is because the lot size is so small. Uh, in fact, those two buildings take up nearly half, if not more, of the lot size. That's not the case in North Core. That that lot is quite huge and only permits uh that building would only take up, like I said, fifteen percent. So because and Broccolini was all good, good on this. So there, Broccolini um was not going to challenge me on the volume piece, not going to challenge me on the hundred meter setback from Third Line Road. So those pieces are in place. The community is actually appealing uh the zoning that I that I helped put in place. So they're actually appealing that hundred meter setback and appealing the volumetric zoning. Uh, but if if they lose, if the community loses, I'd rather the community lose and end up with the compromised zoning than end up with what Broccolini originally proposed, which would have been their building, their height, in addition to the ability to build more and to not have that setback uh onto onto Third Line Road. So personally, I believe that what we did in North Core is better um in the long term, uh but you know, I'll do what I can and obviously uh people there uh disagreed with some of the with the approach I took and it is what it is. So didn't expect to talk about North Course so much in this Manic meeting. Jeez, if I had a North Core meeting, talked about Manic, they would rake me over the coals. So what's the status of the dig behind the old bistro at Man and Courier? It's a good question. That is um, so if any of you are familiar with beautiful old South Bank Street, you know, there's a property owner there that doesn't really care about people. Um, and he happened to buy a building in Manic recently, which is the old with Dr. Leach's old house. Um, was kit and caboodles for many years and then it became the the Main Street seller and eventually uh bistro. Um, and it was closed and he bought it recently. So he wanted to go in and start putting in a parking lot. But he didn't tell anyone, didn't apply for any permits, didn't do shit and went and just started tearing over uh tearing out someone's property next to them. The city has gotten involved uh heavily and it's the person's been charged, been fined. Um, but they have to go through this process to get the proper permitting place to do what they want to do. The tough thing is the issue between him and the neighbor becomes a civil issue. It's 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 a private issue. And uh, so you know, we're doing what we can on the city side to make sure that this guy's following rules and he doesn't violate rules. Uh, bylaws been have to say multiple times. And it's just been um, everything is relatively a nightmare with this person. And I feel so bad for the person who lives next to them because nobody deserves that. Nobody deserves to have to live next to uh to someone who just doesn't care about anyone but themselves. Um, so as of right now, the status is what you see is the status. We're still waiting uh for, I think, a resubmission from the property owner on their on their application. Uh, and and our our building code services team and I talked to our our head of building code services about this. They're they're involved and they're, you know, trying to work through it with the uh with the property owner to make sure that everything is is adhered to and followed. Um, the building itself, it's a heritage building, so we don't expect it to go anywhere, uh, but that obviously has to be, has to be uh focused on and people have to, you know, continue uh to keep an eye on that property. And hopefully, uh, we can get that resolved and, you know, at least get a retaining wall up there or something there to protect the um the neighbor uh behind that. So an unfortunate situation, uh, dealing with that landowner in Richmond as well on a couple of properties and wish that I wasn't. So that is any further questions? I I quite like this. Format. So again, if you've asked a question that I haven't answered, by all means, send me an email. I don't uh, I don't see any more active questions. Um, again, I'll go over some things that park stuff, the parks that showed you. Uh, you can go comment on those, engage Ottawa, just do a Google search, engage Ottawa. It'll bring you to, you'll be able to see a lot of stuff there. If you want to comment on, it's always master plan. If you want to call the comment on the official plan. Uh, the options are all there on Engage Ottawa. Everything that we do, we throw up on there. Um, you know, we try to do, we want to get back to doing in-person consultations. Of course, we will get there. Uh, but right now, Engage Ottawa becomes our our best friend uh when it comes to getting information out there and and soliciting feedback uh from residents. So please, please visit there. And then, yeah, so that. And then uh again, so any questions you have just uh that I didn't answer today, just let me know. The last question was just about uh when will they be done the work in David Bartlett Park? It's supposed to be this summer. So they're supposed to finish up doing things this summer into the fall and reopening the parks. The park will be, the park is slated to be closed for the entire summer of twenty twenty-one uh because the extent of the work involved, uh, but will reopen uh for twenty twenty-two. If not sooner if possible, but it will be reopened for twenty twenty-two. That's the plan. Whoever the anonymous attendee is who asked me all these questions, email me. You have a lot of questions. I love giving answers. So by all means, uh, send me email anytime. Uh, and thank you all. Um, I will, like I said, I recorded this entire session except for the starting part, the 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 few questions at the start that I didn't catch uh on the recording, but we'll post this online. So if anyone wants to watch me uh talk to a camera for an hour and a half, uh, because who wouldn't? Um, you'd be able to go and watch this again if you want to, because, you know, good times. Oh, Bunny asked me if I'm having a session tomorrow. Nope. Nope. So we do uh, we do, we have more, I have more town halls coming up. So I have a town hall coming up for North Core on May tenth. I've got a town hall coming up in Richmond on May eighteenth. We do um bi-weekly drop-ins. So we do a drop-in on the first and third Wednesday of the month. It's just like this, except I actually get to see you and you can find those on our website. We put, we put them out in our e-newsletters. Uh, we put them out on social media, but we also have them on our website. So it's just a, you know, a ward drop-in session, same what we used to do in person, but we now move it to Zoom. And anyone can join those. They're all private. So when you join in, it's just you and me and my staff. Um, but yet we have those. So we just had one yesterday and we'll have one again. The second and fourth Wednesday of the month are councils. So then we fit in, we fit in that. So I've, there's no open house tomorrow, Bonnie. So I'm not sure what that's what that is. But no, I don't have any, I have nothing going on. Um, nothing going on tomorrow, except I gotta go to the dentist. So you can come to the dentist with me, but uh I won't be able to talk to you. All right. Again, any questions you have, please reach out to me. Um, scott dot Moffett R dot C A. Reach out to us on social media and thank you so much for joining us. I appreciate uh, I appreciate the engagement back and forth. Thanks for listening to my uh my uh various piece of information and quasi rants on some things. Um, thank you. Enjoy your night.